Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 6, 2023 Bruce Township Planning Commission meeting. Our start time is 7:01 PM. Dana, will you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 Here. Has resigned.
She's resigned.
Yep.
And I'm here.
All right, we have a quorum. So before we start the business part of our meeting, I would ask everybody rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Just a couple of intro words. I know you've probably all heard this before, so just bear with us for a moment. This is a public business meeting of the planning commission. We do welcome public comments at various points throughout our agenda. We do request that you sign in on the sheet along the table at the wall if you've not already done so. The commission is made up of seven Bruce Township residents appointed by the board. We currently have one vacancy, as we noted at the beginning. In addition, Dana Buchanan is a township employee who assists us with record-keeping and various other tasks. Also, we have Joe Tangeri, who's a professional planner with Giffords Webster, as an advisor on the work that we do. There will be opportunities throughout our agenda for public questions and comments. Generally, we ask that you keep these two, three minutes, but in situations if you're representing more than yourself, a group of residents, more time will be allotted. But we do ask you mindful of this timeframe out of respect for all those who wish to address the commissioners. When you move to the podium, please state your name and your address. We do ask that you address any of your comments directly to the commissioners. With that, we appreciate your participation moving along on the agenda. Item four, approval of the minutes. So commissioners, you have a copy of the minutes in your packet. Are there any changes or modifications needed to correct the minutes?
I have a few.
Okay.
Page two, towards the top, where it says discussion took place among the commissioners and the planner. I think we should note the letters that we received for that SLU. I think we should note how many we received in support and how many we received against approving the SLU, and I thought it was four and one, if I recall. And I think it's just important to note that because part of our motion was stating that most of the neighbors were okay with it. I would just put it as an additional note under the discussion that we had so many letters received in support and find out how many, I think there were four, or four neighbors that were in support, and then I think we had one that was against.
There was one against, yeah.
Bottom of page three, the very last sentence on the motion where it says also subject to revise plan that shows the six trees required for parking lot landscaping. I think there should be a period at the end of that because the verification was supposed to be for all of the subject twos, not just the last one. So I think the last sentence should read verification of all contingencies to be done by Joe Tangeri, comma, the township planning consultant. My presumption is they did all that.
Yes. Yeah, that one has.
And then the last page where it says comments from commissioners, where it says Tremblay asked planner Tangeri for clarification about the site planning validity period, and then just put in Tangeri clarified accordingly. I think there was some discussion.
Yeah.
And that's all I have. Just so it's, the minutes are clear reflection, or clear reflection. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome. Any other comments or changes to the meeting minutes from the August 9 meeting?
I had on page two in the first box where it says the existing unsided structure is to remain open air and unsided. Should we clarify that to call it the covered gathering space because it's referenced in that box earlier? Instead of using unsided structure, the covered gathering space structures to remain open air and unsided?
Call them the same thing.
Say it again. So the seventh bullet where it says unsided.
We're specifying the existing unsided structure to reference the covered gathering space is to remain open air and unsided.
Then the first bullet, we call it a covered gathering space, until the seventh one, it kind of has a different description. All right. Anything else? If not, I need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Cupids.
I'll second.
Second by Barnett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Okay. So approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I have one question. We are going to reach a point in this where we shift over to the discussion of making motions. I'm wondering if you plan on continuing all the way through or are you going to take a little break? Dana, do you need to set up anything or you're all set? Okay. And they'll be able to see or have a copy.
Yes, the audience, this will be on video.
Okay.
And the audience can see.
I'm okay without a break. I just wanted to check to see if we should.
Looks like we're, see where we're at.
Yep. I think we're.
Okay.
If we get to that point, we need one, we can certainly.
That's fine. I'll make the motion to approve that.
All right. Motion by Cupids to approve the agenda. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Hegelstein. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Item six is our public comment, so if you are here to speak on any items, you are welcome to come up and do so. Seeing no movement, we will move on to public hearings. Zoning ordinance amendment for C2 district lots sizes.
So we discussed this at the last meeting. Basically, the gist of it was that our C2 district was set up as a land shopping district at a time when lots of large strip mall type development was the norm for commercial development, and that has become less relevant for time. So we looked at the standards for the C2 district, which require five acres, 300 feet lot width, and then 75 foot front setback, 60 foot rear setback, and a 40 foot side setback. And we talked about bringing the sizes down to accommodate more modern commercial development. So 1.5 acres, 100 foot lot, lot width, 30 foot front setback, 30 foot rear setback. The side setbacks are zero feet and a total of 20, and then a minimum of 40 feet from residential zoning or residential use. And that's to provide greater flexibility of development styles and acknowledge that modern development frequently wants to bring the building closer to the property, front of the property for enhanced visibility. And that's the quick summary. Certainly discuss anything that you would like to discuss.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing at 7:12.
I'll second. Second by Kent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. All right. Public hearing is open. If you'd like to make any comments on the topic.
Justin Raz, 13743 33 Mile Road, representing Raz Building and Development. We're in favor of this. Everything sounds good. We can definitely work with it, albeit I still believe that the acre and a half should be in the thousands of square feet like C1 and C2, but the acre and a half definitely will work.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:13 PM.
Second.
Motion by Tremblay, second by Barnett to close the public hearing at 7:13. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Joe, I have a question.
Yeah.
It's part of my packet that was a draft of the ordinance change, and the ordinance change shows the old measurements on it. Did you notice that? So I just think they should be updated to reflect the new ones.
The one I have shows the new ones, so.
Okay, we must have got the wrong.
I must have, maybe I PDF'd it and sent them on PDF. That must be when I did, I must have PDF'd it before I changed it, because I've got the correct numbers in front of me. 1.5, 100, 30, 30, 20, 40 are the numbers that I've got in front of me, so. I must have sent the wrong PDF. I will send you the correct PDF.
Okay.
I'll open, I'll set the email up now to send it because I'm not connected to the internet.
Mine looks right.
Let's see yours. What you have is a letter, you don't have the draft ordinance. Did you get a pro copy of the draft ordinance?
I did.
Andy has it.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Oh, yep.
Right.
I did.
So you noticed the numbers are?
The old numbers.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just let it be noted that the ordinance draft will be updated to reflect the numbers as agreed to.
I just, I can't send the email now because I'm not connected to the internet, but when I get home, I'll hit send.
Okay.
Not sure, not sure how I did that, but.
If we make the recommendation, make sure the right one goes to the board.
Yes.
I've got some comments to make. Following Justin's request, one and a half acres converted to square feet, it'd be 65,340. And also, I looked at the comparison of in, I'll call it descending order, C2, C3, and C1. So respectively, they'd be 65, 340 revised, C3 existing is 15,000 square feet, and C1 is 12,000 square feet. Okay, following that order, minimum lot width is 180 and 80. Minimum front setback for revised C2 would be 30, for C3 would be 45, and for C1 would be 40. So I'm having a little difficulty getting my head around this, Joe, because we're going with a larger lot size with smaller setbacks. So, and respectively for rear revised C2 becomes 30, for rear setback, existing C3 is 40, C1 is 20, and side setback revised for C2 becomes 20, existing C3 is 40, and C1 is 30. So.
The C3, that's not a practical side setback because you have an 80 foot minimum lot width. So we'll probably be digging into the C3 at some point soon, but that's something that we're going to have to look at because if you have the minimum lot width in the C3 district, you literally can't build anything on it.
Should we not be discussing that right now because this conversation is limited to C2? Is that correct?
I think it's good conversation.
Yeah, I don't object to the conversation at all.
Okay, well.
But I did want to know that if you've got a minimum lot width of 80 and two side setbacks of 40, that's not really a workable standard.
Okay. So, okay, in descending order, I think we've already discussed, you know, the revised C2 at length, but in descending order becomes C3. So reasonable and customary, Joe, with a 15,000 square foot lot size, I mean, what do you think that should be, just for discussion purposes?
In terms of the side setbacks?
Well, it'd be for in order in the ordinance, it goes front, rear, then side, and their C3 is currently shown 45, 40, and 40.
45, 40, and 40. So.
And that's also with an 80 foot, both C3 and C1 are 80 foot minimum lot width.
I think for modern commercial development, you'd probably have this pretty much the same standard you'd have in C2 for the side lot lines. That 020 accommodates the way commercial development is done now.
Okay.
For a rear setback, I think that, I guess I have a couple thoughts on that. One is that we have the 40 foot setback in the C2 from residentially zoned or used property, and that rear setback in C3 matches that 40.
Well, you're talking revised C2, and you're talking rear setback is what?
30.
30.
Unless you have residential.
Okay.
And that would also imply it inside, residential side is standing on that side. So I think that leaving the rear at 40 is probably okay.
Okay.
You have C3, just because you do tend to have heavier uses in the C3, or at least you could have heavier uses in the C3. And then as far as the front setback is, you said it's 40 right now, right?
45 in C3.
So I think you could probably bring that down. Essentially, what you're trying to do is give people the option to pull the building up. And at 45, I'll just do the math real quick here. You have about enough room, you do 45 for your parking setback, sidewalk along the front of the building, maneuvering lane, one may of parking. And I actually see that as something that could potentially be appealing to a lot of current commercial developers. I actually have a project in front of me in Washington Township right now that has that exact direction. One row of parking, a maneuvering lane, a sidewalk, and then a 10 foot setback from driveway to buffer the parking, and then the building is.
That's with a 45 foot.
Yeah, that's, it's about 45. It's not quite exactly, but it's roughly 45. So 40 or 45 is probably reasonable there.
Okay. And then what about C1?
12,000 square feet, right?
Yep, 12,000 square feet, same thing, 80 foot minimum front inch, 40 foot front setback, 20 foot rear, and a 30 foot side.
It's a neighborhood commercial. I think I'd rather see the front and rear setbacks, allow the building to come closer to the street and keep it further away from the residential that's almost certainly behind. And as far as the side setbacks, 30 and 30 on an 80 foot lot doesn't leave you with much, leaves you with 20 feet. So I think you, I think you probably should, it's most likely that 020, again, it allows you to get right up next to another commercial building in the same district.
Okay, so you know what? I stated that incorrectly. Let me restate. Okay, C1 is 40 front, existing 20 rear. Okay, so leave that as is.
I would say reverse them because you pull the building further from the, C1 is almost certainly going to have a residential behind it.
Okay.
So you pull the building away from the residential and pull it up to the street, which is where developers tend to want it.
So it'd be 20, suggested 20 front and then 40 rear?
Yeah, I think that's probably.
20, 40. And then what about side?
I think you could look at the 020 standard there. Most likely, that's probably what I would look at, or at least going down to 20 and 20. Because 30 and 30 is a lot for a small site like that, and it doesn't really leave you much in the middle of the site.
Okay.
And you need to have at least 40 feet to work with for your building, for a commercial building. Because it, there's a lot of different things with the configuration, depending on what your use is and things like that. I think that you have a lot more versatility if you've got 40 feet to work with than if you've got 20.
So we want to have Joe come back with a memo next meeting, his recommendations?
We certainly do that. We can certainly look at the other C districts. And I, if we were going to do that, I might even consider looking at the use lists again.
Yeah, that's the only thing I was going to say is if we're going to open this up.
Like, let's just really open it.
Are we just going to, like, are we just looking at the lot sizes and setbacks? Or should we look at the whole?
I think you probably should look at the use list if we're going to dig into it. I mean, let's really dig into it and look at these three districts and see how much sense they make to us now.
I think it came up at the end of the last meeting around some of the uses that are allowed and.
It was more the industrial.
Yeah.
Was it? Okay. I thought there were some questions.
But I think it makes sense to look at both commercial and industrial because we probably haven't looked at it in my tenure.
Yeah.
As far as uses, it probably makes sense to look at.
And we, and I did provide something for the industrial tonight, but I think, yeah, looking at the C districts and, you know, some of those uses are really, really long and hyper-specific. And I think we could probably get to more of a category type structure for it where we're defining some terms and here's what falls under that. So instead of 40 different individual retail uses, some of which like camera shops are, no one's ever going to establish another one like that. You have a retail uses, maybe with a size split. you have a retail uses, maybe with a size split. So under a certain square footage is a permitted use in one district, and a special land use in that same district. And then you go to the next district, and it's maybe a larger size is a permitted use. And do it more on that basis. There will probably still be a few specific things we want to call out. But I looked at, I was looking through the C2, 3 districts the other day, and there's just some crazily specific things in there. And we probably don't need to be anything like that specific listed uses.
Do you know why they were included?
Oh, I'm sure it was something came up once and, or there was a...
Well, either that, or, you know, the board and commission before us, they put this specificity in there in an attempt to keep the area rural and keep out the, more of the urban uses. So, you know, I just, if you're going to look at uses, I caution you, Joe, to try and keep that in mind. I mean, development's coming, but it needs to be controlled. If it's not, you know, we're going to end up looking more like nearby south.
Well, I think what we need to do sooner than later, and this could be part of the same project, is look at design criteria. I think we don't have much right now. We have basically one little line in the ordinance that says you've got to have a certain amount of baseline. That's pretty much it. We have some landscaping standards, of course. But what's going to get you to a more harmonious integration of new uses coming in? I mean, partly it's a matter of where you're going to allow them, right? But also, that the design environment that's created by those uses is going to be important to how they fit. And what's going on behind the glass inside the building is less important than how the building interacts with its surroundings. So it's one of the things we're going to talk about tonight is outdoor storage. So how are we handling outdoor storage so that it's harmonious with the rest of the community? And that's one thing that we would look at in the C districts is when something is happening outside, how is that working with its surroundings? Whether it's an outdoor dining terrace, or a drive-through lane, or whatever it happens to be. And I think that's something that we should look at along with the C districts. Because I think that ultimately, yes, a few things are going to come. And we don't know the speed at which they're going to come, but they will. And we want to be ready for it. And, you know, again, there are going to be some uses that we're going to want to highlight, and they're going to have standards, and we're going to want to make sure that they're handled a certain way. But a lot of uses, as long as it's all inside and the building is of a certain quality and the property is of a certain quality, it doesn't really make that much of a difference.
Well, I beg to differ. Environmental, air, and water. You can have an enclosed building, and you can be a big polluter.
It is possible, depending on what you are.
In the end...
Commercial uses, there's only a few that really are going to be bad.
Well, kind of what started that comment is when I was looking at the industrial stuff. So I'll have some comments when we get into that.
Yeah, industrial uses are much more likely to have those kinds of impacts. And you're right, it doesn't matter if it's all indoors. If they're not disposing of their hazardous materials or things correctly, then that's a problem.
Yeah, it's got to go somewhere. And, you know, the whole waste disposal, it's all about dilution. It either gets diluted in water, or it gets diluted in the air. It just, it doesn't go away.
May I make a suggestion? We're getting way off topic here.
Sure.
So I would suggest that we have an agenda item for next meeting.
Yeah.
Talking about our commercial and our industrial. Three major topics: uses, setbacks, and lot sizes, and design standards. Yeah. Yeah, review our commercial and industrial districts' standards for allowable uses, special land uses, setbacks, and lot sizes, and design standards. Because I think we want, we need to pay more attention to that if we want to have some influence on what we're going to look like in the future. Jared and I are pretty much...
Yeah, we're in agreement on that. Okay. Good discussion. So getting back to the amendment in front of us, we want to move forward with the lot size changes for C2 tonight, and then tackle the rest next meeting?
Yeah.
So Rick, you had a couple of suggestions. I think, you know, the handling this in square feet was to be consistent with how we're measuring the others.
Yeah, per Justin's request, I think that makes sense. So we're not jumping back and forth within the ordinance.
Yep, I agree, it makes sense. Joe, are you good with making that change?
Yeah.
Any other?
What was the square foot that you got for 1 and 1/2?
Uh, 65, 340, but Joe will double check. Yeah, I'm looking at it right here, 65, 340 for an acre and a half.
Yeah, that's the correct.
Okay. Joe, my only question was, is there a need to clarify when it can be zero side and when it can be 20? Or is that going to just be...
No, it's, yeah, it's got to be...
Big enough, 10 and 10, 5 and 15.
But it's only zero if it's budding up to another building, correct?
Yeah, well, technically, if you've got another C2 parcel there, it could be zero, and then another building could come in and be zero as well. And then you have two buildings, you know, budding up against each other.
Right.
Which is actually kind of a traditional commercial...
So my only question is, do we have to clarify that component?
I don't think so.
So someone comes in with a plan...
It's a firm 20 total, right?
Yeah, 20 total.
So you could put 0 on one side and 20 on the other?
And 20 on the other.
Which I'm concerned, Jared.
We're going to allow 0 if it's not budding up to another building? You're going to build right to the lot line?
Yeah, I mean, you're kind of setting it up for two buildings to be... The other thing about 0 is that if you have an existing center, and this is done pretty frequently for various reasons, you want to actually split the property. Sometimes a bank will actually force you to do a split. If you're refinancing or trying to finance a renovation or something like that, when you do the split, 0, 0 is fine. Because it's permitted in the ordinance as long as you've got 20 on the other sides. So that's another thing that facilitates the redevelopment or renovation of these centers with financing. When the bank is telling them that, all right, you're going to redo the end cap of this, you have to split it in order for the financing to work on the rest of the property. I've seen a lot of instances of that in the last few years where people have come in to split some part of a shopping center off, and they've said, this is the only way the bank is letting us do this. And it always causes a problem because they wind up going to zoning board appeals to get a setback variance because they're splitting the property.
But per the ordinance, it'd be 20 unless there's an adjoining building making it 0, right?
Uh, no, it would be right, it could be right on the property line.
Even without an adjoining building?
Yeah, you just need to have 20 on the other side.
Let me ask you, is that pretty much standard for commercial?
It's pretty common, yeah.
Okay.
So Joe, just as an example, the Fiddler's Cove sold and was going to be redeveloped as individual condominiums. And one of the center buildings was trying to get financing, like you're saying. And they have, you know, a suite next to them and a suite on the other side. That's when the 0 lot line becomes a thing. The whole building as a whole still has your minimums on each side of them.
Right.
You're just talking about one suite that could potentially be split off into its own condominium.
Right. Usually, it's like an end cap, like the largest, the largest part of the centers. You've got your anchor store.
Right.
They want to redo that, or maybe even split it up or something because big box is kind of a dying breed. They have to get financing to do that. And rather than refinancing the entire center, the bank is looking for them to refinance exactly what they're working on, and they've got to split it in order to get the financing to work. It's a, it's a, I think people don't quite know how much banks drive the way projects get done. They really have an outsized role in the way development occurs just because of their control of the financing of development.
What's their rationale? Why would you...
You know, I don't honestly know. But I'm sure they've got actuaries who could tell you exactly what the rationale for it is. But I don't know what it is.
So I'm tracking with you on the explanation and the use of why this makes sense. I guess, what is to prevent somebody coming in here with plans budding up to property they don't even own? Maybe there is no other building there, and they could put it right on the edge.
Well, unless it's residential property, there really wouldn't be anything.
Okay, and that's normal.
They could do the 0 lot line, yeah. And that is pretty normal.
Okay.
If you go up and down any of these aisle roads in McComb, you'll see a lot of it.
Seems odd to me, but it's fine.
We've had prior discussion, I think Justin shared, that basically what you're going to be allowed to build out there is going to be predicated on parking, correct?
Any one of your projects is going to be predicated on a lot of different things. You know, when you take a look at the square footage of lot size, you know, 15,000 or 12,000 in C1 or 3, you know, you're going to have to pick a pretty specific use to get a building, you know, on a lot that's small to start with. Utilizing the setbacks, and you guys are on the right track as far as, you know, Joe's right, things up towards the front of the lot, parking in the rear. You still have to have good circulation in all of your drivelanes and things like that. And I think what's going to end up happening is if this township actually had a 15,000 or 12,000 square foot commercial lot, which, I mean, you guys have about eight commercial properties in the township as it stands. Two are not developed. And you're going to end up with something larger than that anyway, here.
Probably.
Mostly. So I think that your site plan approval process, and your engineering approval, and all of your other ordinances for parking, you know, via capacity in the building, is really going to drive the whole situation.
It's going to drive the appearance of...
It's going to drive the appearance of how they develop that piece of land. Absolutely. And that's your backstop, which is good. You know, your parking ordinance is the thing that gives you guys a little bit more leverage.
Yeah, the single largest consumer of land in any development in most American communities is parking. I mean, it's just, it's what takes up the most land by far. Usually because we have too much of it, but...
Well, and that's a trend too, Joe, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, reduction of parking standards is a trend that's going on pretty much everywhere now. But, um, but yeah, parking is by far the biggest eater of land in American development. And then, you know, when you're outside of a core urban area, the other, like, the number two is your stormwater management. Because you have to be able to detain stormwater on site, and that tends to take up some land as well. But parking really is, it eats the land more than anything else, really.
Okay. So if no other discussion, we would need a motion to recommend these ordinance changes to the board?
That's correct, yes.
Can we close the public hearing?
Yes. Anyone interested in making an attempt at the motion?
I'll submit the motion. I'd like to submit a motion to accept the recommendation in Joe Tangeri's memo regarding changes to the C2 district regarding lot size, lot width, front setback, rear setback, and side setback changes.
And minimum? I think he said lot area. What'd you say, that's the same?
No, it's a minimum setback from residential, do you want to include that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yep, please amend that. And also, one additional comment in changing the 1.5-acre reference to square foot, which would be 65,340 square feet.
Okay, motion by Rick, is there a second? Motion by Hegelstein, seconded by Cupitz. Any other discussion before we vote on the motion? All right, Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Cupitz?
Yes.
Tremblin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Hegelstein?
Yes.
Ken?
Motion passes. All right, item 8, reviews, there are none this evening. Moving on to item 9, communications. There is none. Oh, do you have anything to add?
Yes, tomorrow, there is going to be a dedication of the, Dana's holding it up, of the Bruce Township Veterans Memorial at noon.
That's nice.
If you're so inclined. I believe there's an individual in our community who's invested a lot of time and money in upgrading our memorial over there to make it more appealing.
His name is Ken Melton.
Yeah, Ken Melton. And he will be recognized also. There'd be some local dignitaries there, and hot dogs, from what I understand, so...
Where's the memorial at?
It's right in the back of the lot.
Excellent.
So worth attending if you've got the inclination.
I'll try.
My husband's cooking hot dogs.
And then September 11th, the township will be observing 9/11, the tragedy there, at 8:45 a.m. on the township grounds. I think in the back, at the front, at the flagpole. 8:45 on September 11th, if you're interested.
Any other items of communication? All right. Moving on to item 10A, 5G.
There's nothing new on that tonight.
Did you get that email from Mike?
You know, I got that email from Mike, and I started doing my own research into what professionals have looked at. And the exposure to the millimeter waves that are associated with 5G is the equivalent of Bluetooth devices and baby monitors. I don't know if you've read that, Joe.
Yeah, that's about what I've heard.
And the other thing I was reading about, RF low frequency forms of energy is not powerful enough to change your cells in your body, so... I think that this is, it's a controversial subject, but there's some people who are real smart in this field who determine that it's not as unsafe as some people want to make it seem.
There's a lot of data that counters everything you just said as well, by professionals in the industry.
Yeah, so...
Who funded?
There's multiple, multiple views and multiple studies to support both sides. Kind of like COVID.
How did it all get started?
Huh?
How did it all get started?
5G?
No, no. Get it to the point of having this public view.
The reason it's on our agenda is because we have, the board has stated that we don't want 5G in our township.
The board has said?
The board has said that's been in place for a number of years, prior to many of you being on the planning commission. I'm just familiar because I know when it happened, it's at least five or six years ago, minimum. The fact of the matter is, though, there's not a lot of enforcement. But if you want it to have any bite, you've got to have it a continuing agenda item. So the board has opted to have it continue to be on our agenda, so... As things develop, you know, and statutes change, we'll have more opportunity. That's why it's on our agenda, on a continuous basis.
Purpose of the open meeting is just to get input?
I don't think it's an open meeting. I think it's just, it's an agenda item, or it's not an open meeting at all.
Yeah, it's just for discussion.
Just for board discussion, or planning commission discussion. Just for board discussion, or planning commission discussion.
Moving on to 10B, outdoor storage without a building.
Right, so the without a building portion kind of went away after our discussion last time, we were really talking about, we wanted this to be accessory to something. So I did come up with some proposed language, it does build off of the language that I commented on last time, I left those comments in the memo. I changed the organization a bit to address first commercial storage and then industrial storage, some kind of different needs there. I, I've expanded some things, and I really just tried to think about, all right, what are all the things we need to capture here? So, one is, there was no intent statement with the existing regulations, so I added a little intent statement, and it's pretty simple, but it just says, "The intent of this section is to regulate outdoor storage in a manner that protects the health, safety, and welfare of township residents and businesses by preserving aesthetic quality in a pleasant environment, limiting dust and debris, and protecting groundwater." So, what are we trying to do with these regulations? What's the purpose of them? And that way, if there's some interpretation question 10 years from now, I mean, look at the intent statement and say, well, what are we trying to do with these regulations? Here's what we're trying to do, and that affects how we interpret the ordinance, whether we're an administrative official, or the zoning board appeals, or whoever it is trying to interpret the ordinance. So let me move on to commercial storage. So outdoor storage in commercial districts shall meet the following standards, saying it has to be clearly incidental to an indoor commercial use, and that could mean that, you know, it's, you know, a sales use where some of the stuff is stored outside, or something like that. Outdoor storage areas have a maximum of the site that they can occupy, or a relative area, relative to the size of the building, so we're, we're making sure that the outdoor storage area is not blowing away the building, you're not just putting a tiny little shack on there to store a bunch of stuff outside. Outdoor storage area paved in accordance to standards of section, et cetera, I'm not going to read all that, for surfacing parking lots, so when you have commercial outdoor storage, we're surfacing the area, like a parking area, it's going to be, it's not going to be huge, but we're, we're making sure that we're surfacing that area. That changes in industrial. Outdoor storage of living plant materials, lawn furniture, playground equipment, and garden supplies intended for sale as an accessory to a retail establishment shall be exempt from these requirements provided it is maintained in good condition. So, if you are, for instance, marketing playground equipment, it often makes sense to market that outside, you set up the playground equipment as a display. And if you're potentially going to have someone send their kid down the slide, you probably don't want them landing on asphalt. So, we're not requiring them to pave under that, you're going to put it in mulch, most likely. There's a good example of a place like that near me, wedged into Berkeley, so. I think that when you do have living plant materials, say you're a florist or a nursery or something and you're selling that material, you, a paved surface might not necessarily be the most practical application, so we're trying to build in an exemption there that really thinks about, in what circumstances would this really not work? And then the other thing is outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment for sale, where and as permitted, shall be exempt from these requirements except for the paving requirements. So if you're a car dealership, yes, you can keep your cars outside, we don't, you're not going to have to have all your cars indoors, that's not a practical standard for most car dealerships. And then, yeah, if you're selling combines or forklifts or whatever it is you're selling, those can be kept outside, but they do have to be on a paved surface. And then when we move on to industrial storage, so outdoor storage, including the storage of vehicles and equipment in industrial districts, has to meet these standards. So we have all outdoor storage to be accessory, no storage parking or sales of stored vehicles or equipment shall occur in front of the established building line, no storage or parking of stored vehicles shall occur within 100 feet of residential, his own property. That, for our industrial districts, is a pretty easy standard to meet, most of our industrial properties are simply not that close to residential properties. Let's see, areas dedicated for outdoor storage should be enclosed with a fence and minimum of six, a minimum of six feet tall, it's supposed to say a minimum, not and a minimum, and a maximum of eight feet tall, and you can't have barbed wire, razor wire, electric fencing on it. Where the fence faces a roadway and is located within 50 feet of the right-of-way, the design of the fence has to be decorative, obscuring or masonry wall, you could do a wall too, that's a lot costlier, so probably not many people are going to go for that option, but we make it an option. Where the fence faces a major thoroughfare, landscaping shall be required at its base as approved by the planning commission. Not being too specific there, but we do want them to dress it up a little bit because the major thoroughfare isn't necessarily just going to be industrial traffic, that could be people just passing through on the way home from work or the grocery store or something. Chain link fences with slats, wraps, and other obscuring attachments are not permitted where obscuring fences are required, so these things tend to come apart over time, they have to be very meticulously maintained to still look good after a few years, so we're just kind of going around it, we're, we don't want that. Fences located along the side of your property line should be constructed 20 feet from the property line unless otherwise approved by the planning commission, so the idea of that is to allow the green belt on the exterior side of the fence. Planning commission may find that there are circumstances in which there's a reason for the fence to be on the property line, providing a waiver there for you to approve that when necessary, and then there is a green belt standard. And this is adapted from that existing green belt standard, basically staggered rows of evergreens, allowing some of those to be replaced with deciduous trees along the front wall, and then up to, let's see, I'm just trying to pick out the highlights here. And then, yeah, a waiver standard in case there is actually existing vegetation, you could allow them to use that in lieu of planting a green belt, if they have vegetation that functions as a green belt. Then, for our surfacing requirements, you might potentially have a large area of land here and requiring paving, apart from the expense, is probably not something we want to do just from a hardscape perspective. Required, you know, six acres of asphalt, that's a lot of asphalt, it's just going to send stormwater sheeting one direction or another, it's not really what we want to be doing. But we do need to have some sort of low dust surface, we are allowing for concrete, asphalt, gravel, or crushed limestone. It's a such as, so they may have an alternative, millings or something might be what they're coming through with, but generally speaking, we're looking for something that limits dust and is going to support whatever we're putting on it. Areas dedicated for the storage of tracked vehicle, for, for the storage of vehicles, you're going to pave those, and then if it's tracked vehicles, you can put those on, on gravel because they'll just chew up asphalt. And then we've got, we're referring to the engineering standards for those areas. And then repairs conducted indoors, buildings requiring, conforming to required setbacks, and then the, the little disclaimer that's already in there, basically saying that you still have to follow the list of permitted uses in the industrial districts. But this kind of universalizes the standards that were previously applied to outdoor storage of currently operating licensed equipment and vehicles, it deals with both commercial and industrial outdoor storage, and in general, it's seeking to make these outdoor storage areas work with their surroundings and avoid a situation where someone's just putting a bunch of stuff behind their building and it's just sitting there in open view and it's becoming an eyesore or creating a blight problem.
I had a question for you, Joe. Under six, all areas designed for storage shall be surfaced with material that prevents dust. Is that statement in itself, if the developer or owner is noncompliant, does that, does that lead into a nuisance?
Yeah, it could be, if you've got a lot of dust coming off of a site, their operations are just kicking up, and it's causing a problem for surrounding property owners, and there's a complaint, you can then say, all right, we're having a problem with dust here, you need to do something about the surfacing or the way you're handling your operations that reduces that dust and removes that nuisance.
So it's subjective, but we do have the power still in force?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, I'm going to ask a question, do we need an introductory paragraph to introduce sections B and C that state that outdoor storage is limited to the commercial and industrial zoning districts only? Or is it implied?
It's implied in the language.
I, I think it'd be better if we were explicit.
You are going to have agricultural uses that are sort of?
True.
Exempted, I guess.
But they're exempted by the Right to Farm Act, correct? Or is it something different?
Yeah, Right to Farm doesn't really exempt agriculture from anything on its own. It provides an affirmative defense against nuisance complaints, provided that the agricultural operation is operating in accordance with the generally accepted agricultural management practices. That's a mouthful, but that's what the Right to Farm Act actually does. As far as exemptions, our, like our accessory building ordinance explicitly exempts agricultural only structures from those requirements, apart from setbacks. The exemption from permitting for agricultural buildings is actually found in the state building code, it's actually not derived from Right to Farm. As far as the outdoor storage of, of equipment and things on a, on a farm or agricultural site, I have to think about what actually exempts that from enforcement or blight or other nuisance complaints. Right to Farm is probably the main thing because someone would have to bring action, and if they could show that they were acting in accordance with the generally accepted agricultural management practices, then they would have an affirmative defense against that action. So, yeah, it probably is Right to Farm ultimately, I don't think we need to carve an exemption out for them in the zoning ordinance. But, yeah, I, we could, it could go in the intent statement.
Okay.
Yeah, I can add something like, to that effect.
And then, a number B4, what would be an example of that exemption?
Car dealership or, yeah, well, you have your inventory outside?
B4.
Oh, B4. Well, the example I gave was the place that was displaying its playground equipment, or you could have, you know, for instance, if you had a, a nursery type business, that was, maybe they have a little building that they sell flowers and succulents in and things, but they've also got a display area where they have trees with their root balls attached, they probably aren't going to be putting that up.
Would, would this also include like a landscaping company that sells materials like mulch and rock and they have all these silos?
Yeah, it probably would include something like that. Because in that case, you know, if you're moving around large pallets of?
I'm just concerned how that would look in an industrial district. Well, that's commercial.
That's commercial, yeah.
Didn't you guys just do a site plan approval for landscaper, and he's got on the site plan some sectioned areas for materials that he takes to site?
Yeah, those were both, there were two of them, and they were both in industrial districts.
And again, those are allowable, as long as they're behind the building, screened, et cetera.
Right, yeah, your yard can't be in front of, can't come in front of the building line, and then you've got to screen it and fence it.
And then C1, it says indoor commercial, should that mean indoor industrial?
Oh, industrial, yeah, it should be industrial, it's probably just a copy paste.
What was the section you mentioned, Joe, about sales of vehicles, in industrial or commercial?
That was B5.
Yeah, B5, so like a car dealership can keep its inventory of vehicles outside, we're carving out an exception for that because it probably wouldn't be reasonable to require them to keep them all indoors.
No, and I get that, but as an example, in, in the M1 district, you know, if a landscaper or a trucking company or somebody, you know, wants to sell a vehicle that they're replacing that season, or, you know, a plow implement or tractor or something?
They just can't conduct those sales in front of the established building line, so you have a building and it's got to be either, you know, even with the front of the building or further back, not doing it out front.
Well, I mean, there are a couple businesses that I've seen, you know, trying to sell a vehicle?
Sure.
You know, up and down the corridor. Are you, are you trying to wane that concept? Is that the idea?
Well, yeah, I think we're trying to get away from the truck sitting out on the front lawn for three months with a for-sale sign in its window, and these days, if you're trying to sell a piece of equipment and you're not doing it online, I'm not sure what you're doing.
Well, another thing that actually comes to mind to some of us, especially with the screening and things like that, was the IAA that just got turned down a few months ago.
Yep.
You know, that topic was broached, I think, by that corporation based on the idea that they thought they had something in the M1 special use language for automobile sales. And I think what it actually is, is automobile implement and that type of sale.
Right.
So, I think I might have used the example, you know, that night of the sheer truck up in Alma, you know, you can bring your pickup in to have a dump bed put on it or something like that.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the intent of that portion of the ordinance. Are you going to try to use something in this to solidify that you won't have another company come in like that and look for special angles?
Yeah, I mean, this definitely makes it a little bit tougher, but, I mean, ultimately, someone could potentially approach us again for something similar to that, it's, we can't zone it out, but we can be firm about, you know, where we feel it's appropriate, and, you know, I think that.
So, I think along those lines though, Joe, I mean, some of these things aren't allowable in the zoning district that these are in, like a car dealership. in the zoning district that these are in, like a car dealership, correct? And we're talking about M one or industrial, that's not allowable?
No, no, you can't actually have a car dealership there.
So why are we...
I don't think you guys allow a car dealership anywhere in your zoning that I've read.
Why are we creating these exemptions for things that aren't allowed?
Well, I guess, I guess it's just the phrase or sales really that we would wanna look at.
Well, I think part of this kind of dovetails into this further agenda item, which is looking at some of the uses of this district, because when I look at some of these, I don't know, is that really what our intention of that, what that district becomes? That we want to allow that?
Let me look at one thing in the zoning ordinance real quick before I elaborate on any of The thing that's permitted in the M one district is special land use is retail uses which have a warehouse or industrial character by reason of enclosed outdoor storage requirements or activities such as but not limited to... This is long, so settle in. Lumberyards, new building materials, upholsterers, cabinet makers, outdoor boats, house trailers, automobile or agricultural implement sales, uses serving the convenience needed in the manufacturing district such as but not limited to, and then it's like eating and drinking, establishments, banks, savings, loans, associations, credit unions, automobile service stations, motels, bowling alleys. It's kind of a strange one. Trade, I'm not sure how a bowling alley serves the industrial district. Trade or industrial schools, medical or other offices serving such district, including an industrial medical clinic and similar uses as determined by the planning commission. It's a very wide open designation.
Some of those are more commercial uses than they are.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's the, I mean, it starts with the word retail. So I think that if you were, let's say you, you know, when you're on 96 in Milford and you see that, that business that's got all the high lows, you know? If you were that, I think this would, special land use probably is what you would be looking So, yeah, that's a big one. That's a big one for us to discuss when we're talking about those industrial uses. And that's, I think that's what I was looking at when I put this, the reference to or sales in the industrial outdoor storage standards. No storage parking or sales of stored vehicles and or equipment shall occur in front of the established building line.
So Mike, I got a question for you. In light of the fact that we're gonna review some of the uses in this district, does it make sense to table further discussion?
Well, I think it makes perfect sense not to move this on.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was gonna suggest that we, you know, any comments you have, obviously, we have them and we integrate them as necessary.
Okay.
But then we would put this aside until we've had the discussion about industrial and commercial uses. Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense.
Do you have a question on number five?
Sure.
It says up to one-third of these trees may be substituted with deciduous trees. Is that referring to the sides in the rear since the front line can be up to 50% deciduous?
Oh, the, the sentence that says green belt or on the front wall incorporate up to 50% deciduous trees should be deleted. That, that sentence wasn't supposed to be there. So it's just supposed to be a one-third substitution standard. The sentence that I wanted to delete is actually existing language and I just neglected to delete it.
So there's no substitution at all?
There's substitution with of up to a third with deciduous. So you can, you can sprinkle in some deciduous trees in with your evergreens. The thing about that is that if you do all screening evergreens, that performs a pretty good visual screen. However, over time, you don't really get, you know, a canopy effect, whereas if you allow some deciduous trees to sprinkle through there, you can get the canopy effect, which in the warmer months particularly, gives you extra screening because all of a sudden you're really, you're giving it almost a roof as well as that kind of wall-like screening. And that can also help with, you know, if you've got a lot of pavement on a site, it's hot in the summer. You've got a little bit more shade on that, you don't get those heat island effects from those individual sites. So I think allowing some of those trees to be deciduous trees can have benefits down the road. Also, it's gonna give you a canopy that's gonna get taller than your buildings. So when you're looking out over your industrial district, you're not just gonna see buildings and maybe a couple little tiny green triangles sticking up here and there from the, from the evergreens, you'll see some real canopy trees that are actually coming up above those buildings and softening the visual impact of that industrial area.
Are there any other comments for Joe on the proposed language for outdoor storage?
All right, I'll take that and I'll hold on to it.
Hold on tightly.
While we have that other...
You'll make the changes that we suggested.
Yes, I will, I will make those changes. And then we'll bring it back after we've gotten through some of the other discussion and we'll roll it into everything else.
All right, thank you, Joe. Speaking of which, 11A new business, review industrial district allowable and special land uses.
Yes, so I just did a very quick introduction to this for this meeting.
You want to front end this with why we're doing this?
Yeah, yeah, so just to put some context into why this item is on the agenda, we had a meeting here at the township with a landowner in the corridor who had expressed some concerns around blight in that area, some concerns around some of the uses going on within the district and is that really manufacturing industrial and is kind of, I think, properly questioning what is it that we want that area to become? And so as a result of that, we agreed to take a look at and review what is allowed and what is covered under special land use to see if some additional clarifications and/or adjustments to that language is warranted.
So I put together a very brief memo that gives you some standards from another community. And the reason I chose the, this community, it's Horace, North Dakota. We actually did a zoning ordinance for them. I went to North Dakota for a meeting in February. It was not the time I would recommend visiting North Dakota. But they are somewhat in the same situation as Bruce Township. They are on the edge of the Fargo metro area. The Fargo metro area is growing very fast. It's growing a lot faster than southeast Michigan. And they are finding themselves in the situation of suddenly needing to deal with hundreds of different types of things that they've never had to deal with before. They were out there 20 years ago and now they're right on the edge of all the development. And we're in the M 53 corridor, you can feel that pressure coming up the M 53 corridor. You know, Washington Township's been working on its master plan for the last two years and that's been the main thing we've been talking about is just all that development coming up. And once it gets through the M 53 corridor in Washington, it's gonna wanna come here. So that's where Horace is right now. They're more in the Washington situation than they are in the Bruce situation. So they've had to kind of scramble to figure out all their regulations. And they have two industrial districts and you can see that the list of uses in each one of them is very compact. And then there are some pretty extensive definitions that define what is heavy industry, what is light industry when we use that term in the districts. Because what most zoning ordinance has, have is that those listed uses that are manufacturing of name 20 individual things and then, you know, it just takes forever to get through those lists to figure out where the thing you want is. So we defined those uses and we put those lists in the definitions and then you wind up with this much cleaner list of uses in the district. So I just, I wanted to point that out as a, as a potential evolution of our approach to the way we list uses in the industrial districts. And then I included, you have really three industrial districts, the industrial research office district, the M one light manufacturing district. M one is the big one, that's the one we see all the site plan activity in, and then the P I planned industrial district, which has a kind of a different focus. It has a lot of the same listed uses, but it, it's, it's in a compact area in one part of the township, whereas the M one is more of a swath of the township. And the, the planned industrial district, I wanna get the cross streets right, so I'm gonna look at the map, but that is in, it's at 34 mile and Van Dyke M 53. And there is some M one zoning to the north of it, but it's actually more legacy industrial uses in that area. They've been around for a long time and the zoning sort of had to accommodate the fact that they were there. They're, they're removed from the rest of our more planned industrial area, which is the M one district. So those are the three districts that we have and you can see the, the lists of uses, they're all very wordy. And a lot of them say essentially the same thing, but they might say it a little differently. And sometimes I'm a little unclear as to why things are listed separately from each other. You know, the manufacture of musical instruments, toys, novelties and metal or rubber stamps or other small molded rubber products, and the manufacture or assembly of electrical appliances, electronic instruments and devices, radios and phonographs have essentially the same potential for hazard and external effects. I don't know why they're two separate items and why each item lists the things that it does. They're, they're, it's, I mean, these were written a long time ago and they probably reflected just the order in which things occurred to people for the most part. You have a couple of, you've got a number three under M one, the compounding, processing, packaging or treatment of such products as bakery goods, candy, cosmetics, pharmaceuticals, toiletries, food products, hardware and cutlery, tool, diet, gauge and machine shops. That's like really, there's a lot of difference between bakery goods and tool, diet, gauge and machine shops. But then the next item is the manufacturing, compounding, assembly or improving of articles of merchandise from the following previously prepared materials. So you've got this list of materials, cloth, cork, feathers, cellophane, feather, I guess you may be pillows or something, or puffer jackets or something. Plastics, precious or semi-precious metals. I mean, it's, it's a lot of different materials that are listed there. To the point where I'm not sure it's even meaningful to list the materials. If we're doing manufacturing, compounding, assembling or improving articles with previously prepared materials, I'm not sure we need this list. I mean, I guess it doesn't include uranium, but like everything else is in there and it just seems to me that these could be smoothed out a lot.
Like using a term for, like as an example, these types of things or, I think we're trying to get the intent of it's manufacturing something.
Exactly. And so by defining some terms like light manufacturing, for instance, or compounding or processing, maybe we could define some of those terms and then use them in the districts as appropriate. And then the thing we can do is, you know, we have a purpose and intent statement for the M one light manufacturing district. It says it's designed to primarily accommodate wholesale activities, warehouses and industrial operations conducted wholly within a building and whose external physical effects are restricted to the area of the district in no manner affect in detrimental way any of the surrounding districts. We could expand on that a lot, talk about what we're actually really looking for in this district and it wouldn't include a 750 acre car lot. It would be, we want manufacturing facilities, we're looking to provide employment opportunities. Those are all purposes of a district like this that aren't stated in the zoning ordinance right now that we could work into our purpose and intent statement. And I think that if we work on those three purpose and intent statements, that could give a much, much clearer vision of how to interpret these districts and these list of uses to future planning commissioners and board members and planners and P and Z coordinators and whoever else might need to be interpreting them. But I think those are all things that we need to be considering. We need to be thinking about how do we name the uses, how do we define what we're naming, and then how do we describe the intent of these districts? And, and if we find that the P I district winds up with the same intent as the M one district, well, maybe we combine the two districts and they might not need to be separate districts.
Thanks, Joe.
Sure.
I just wanted to add some further context to what Jared had started with. And it gets up above a level from the details. And that is, what do we want our industrial district to look like?
Right.
What type of clientele do we want in there? Do we want to attract the best industrial customers? And if we do, then we need to work on this ordinance and make it so it, it fits what we want it to look like.
Right.
We do not want to have developers in here struggling to bring clients to us because we haven't acted. So we need to act. Mike Filbrook and I had the opportunity to drive around for two and a half hours with the same gentleman we met with and it was eye opening for me. We looked, we drove around our township, we drove around some of our surrounding areas. And Mike and I were of the belief that we want to be a desired place to come.
Sure.
We don't want to be a country bumpkin hodgepodge place. So that's, that's kind of also Jared and I had talked about putting this on the agenda. So I think with that mindset, the planning commissioners are all with that, that we could attack this and, and bring it forward. And then also coupled with enforcement of our existing ordinances to clean up some of the blight that we had witnessed on our ride. I think we could make this a more attractive place to bring industrial customers. We all know that industrial customers use less tax revenue than they contribute. So it helps the residential property owners to have a nice, strong industrial base.
If you want to keep your mill rates low, bring in an industrial.
So I think it's important to look at that.
You know, listening and reading through this, what comes to mind in form as a question, do we have the opportunity to differentiate as an example for P one, that that would be processing of raw goods and then M one lending itself more to like a final assembly of those? And then, M1 lending itself more to like a final assembly of those previously processed goods?
We could, and we're getting into the details there, but I think we got to push ourselves up a notch or two in defining our purpose and intent.
Right.
What do we want to attract?
You might find that that's how it shakes out as you look at your intent statements. Yeah.
And I think design standards will have a big impact. How do you want it to look?
Right.
You know, you want to look like, you want to be a Class A, you want to be a Class B, Class C, you want to be a country bumpkin. We have intermixed all kinds of different stuff with no rhyme or reason. And Mike and I were of the opinion that we want to attract the best.
Right.
So, hopefully, we all have the same mindset and, and when we revisit this, to make it to a point where we, we are attracting the best. And we clean up our existing ordinances, or we, not, we clean up our existing violation of ordinances.
Yeah.
To make it more appealing to go.
I think one thing we can look at is maybe some data from Macomb Next, and some other similar things that talk, that will, will inform us about what is driving demand for industrial square footage right now. Because, what you'll find, generally speaking, is that it's a lot of different uses than it used to be. And, in particular, there's a lot of warehousing that's, that's driving industrial demand right now. But also, technology testing, laboratory-type uses, where you're, you know, I think somebody we worked with not that long ago had robots or something that they were bringing in and testing. Yeah. And, and that kind of use is really, I mean, that's kind of what's, what's driving a lot of this demand. So, how do we make sure that we're capturing that? Because those are also very high-paying jobs, generally speaking. They drive economic development. And, you know, they, they, they support, you know, a, a lot of, a lot of people who work for those places are going to ultimately move here to be close to where they work. And they'll support home values, and their home sales, and things like that. So, it's all things, they're, they're all intertwined, so it's all stuff we got to think about.
So, just to share some more, I don't know if everybody knows about the history, but at one point in time, ZF Corporation, do you guys know who ZF is? Big seat belt manufacturer, used to be known as TRW.
Down on Twenty-Six.
They were looking, looking at locating their North American headquarters in Bruce Township. And we were courting them. We had offered them tax credits. And, their, their corporate headquarters is in Germany. And they nixed the deal and they're now expanding their facility in Washington Township, investing a hundred million. But that was a big disappointment for Bruce and for the developer. We want to attract those types of businesses, or similar businesses to Bruce Township. So, we need to work with what we have, make it better, and, and make it easier for developers to bring those people in.
I kind of jumped the gun earlier about environmental effects. And, it more appropriately fits to what we're discussing right now. But, I believe Ford, they are, are trying to build a battery plant southwest Michigan.
Yeah, some, yeah.
And now that it's getting close, that the community, the community uprising against it. And, you know, all she got to do is be on YouTube, and, you know, you see a lithium ion fire, vehicle fire, violent fire. And I mean, as much as that may be lucrative, given a choice, I just, I'm very concerned about bringing, bringing the processing, creation, whatever you want to call it, of toxic, heavy metal materials into our township.
Yeah, you're getting into the way lower level than where I think we need to start at.
Yeah, you know, I'm a detail guy, you know that. Think I'd drive you nuts with it.
We need guys like you, though.
Yeah. But, you know, I'd just like to see that us remain mindful of that as we go forward. Thank you.
So, Joe, what would you, based on all that, what you, yeah, what are next steps?
So, I think there's two things that, that I would do for next meeting. One, draft, maybe not in final form, but even in like a bullet form, updated intent statements for these three districts. Really think about, all right, what are we trying to do here? And then, we can go through that, and chisel in some sort of final shape. And then, also, take these list of uses and put them in a, a table, so that we can see the three districts next to each other. We can see how all these little paragraphs that we've got actually work together. And where they're repeated, or where they're almost repeated. What's the overlap between these districts now? And, then we can start talking about what you were talking about earlier is, what do we want the overlap to be? Do we want one of them to be more specialized to something, to one thing than another? You know, we have the IRO district in the, in the zoning ordinance, but we don't have it on our map. Should it be on our map? These are all things that we need to be thinking about. So, I think that's what I would do as a next step. Start, let's really think about the intent hard, and then we'll start the, what exactly is going on in each of these districts conversation as well. And, you know, it's okay if it takes us several months to really talk about this in depth, and make sure that we're happy with where we come out at the end. I think that's the, the main thing, is let's not rush it. Let's really take our time and, and get it right, and discuss things in as much depth as they need to be discussed.
I think, looking at all the districts, you're going to need at least two months for your work, correct?
Yeah, ultimately, there, there's a lot that goes on there. I can very easily prepare the comparison for you next month, and, and some expansions on those intent statements. That's not going to be a problem. So, we'll have something very substantial to look at.
Do you have, do you have intent statements from what you would consider best in class?
I've got a few that I could pull.
Places that you think?
Yeah.
They got it, they got it right.
Yeah, I could definitely give you some examples. And I can, I can look outside my usual set of plans. I could even look at, I know, a few years ago, we did a, so we did a, a couple of districts for Grand Blank Township several years ago. One of them is called Tech Village. They're both, it's, Tech Village was kind of the overall idea. And, we did a, a couple of districts. One was kind of a little commercial residential node, that you could have some activity. And then, the other one was a large industrial campus. And, we've got some pretty serious intent stuff going on in that. So, that's definitely something that I could draw on. And I think that the campus district of those two speaks a lot to what we were talking about tonight, in terms of what we're seeking out for the future.
Okay. Sounds like a great next step. All right. Eleven B. Okay.
Do we want to take a break? As that suggested?
We can, that should probably be more than a short break.
Oh.
So, I.
Are we going to take a break or no?
We'll take a five-minute break. Thanks for the suggestion, Ed.
My pleasure.
All right, you're all good.
Thank you. All right, so we're back in session at 8:46 PM. We are moving on to item 11B on the agenda, which is training and presentation on making a proper motion. So I think we've communicated some of this in the past, maybe email threads or just even at the meeting, an intent to provide some additional training on proper ways to make motions. I think it's an area where we would all agree we could do some improvements and just get more comfortable making motions. And so today, both through a presentation that Dana's going to give us and along with some additional commentary and insight from Ed, who's also done some research, we're going to walk through some material on how to make better motions.
All right, how to get started. So making better motions. I know we've had a lot of discussion lately. Movements are the key, crucial in clearly documenting the actions taken by the planning commission. It kind of all revolves around the motion, is what it's all about. With this in mind, it's very important that all motions be carefully considered and worded so that the intent and resulting actions are clear. All motions must include who made the motion, who seconded or supported the motion, a description of the request, the action taken, whether it was approved, approved with conditions, denied, or tabled, any conditions attached to the motion, including who will verify that they are met, reasons for the action taken, the basis for the actions such as applicable standards, et cetera. Conditions may be imposed on most planning commission motions. All conditions must be reasonable, related to the standards in the ordinance, intended to achieve compliance with the applicable standards in the zoning ordinance, and specifically included in the motion. Suggestions for making better motions. Word conditions carefully. The motion recorded in the record will be the basis for any future actions regarding the case or issue. It is vital that the motion include all conditions exactly as you intended. Don't leave it to the recording secretary to decipher what is meant. Understand before acting. Take the time to make sure that everyone understands the motion and all conditions. I think we all, we do have to do that. Make references. It's advisable to reference the ordinance standards, which are the basis for any conditions. Double check. It's always a good idea to verify that the recording secretary has the motion and all conditions documented clearly for the minutes before proceeding to the next agenda item. I know it's not all about me.
Well, and we do have, we do have a place in the meeting where someone can correct the minutes in not changing the motion, but making sure we got it right.
Right, right, right. And I appreciate that. To recap, the motion to approve, deny, or approve with conditions should state the conclusion and the rationale for the conclusion, indicating how the facts support the decision reached. A motion must have a marker, maker, sorry, and a second, a descriptive description of the nature of the request, the action taken, whether it's the approval, approval with conditions, denial, tabling, any conditions attached to affirmative decisions, and the reasons for the action taken. Movements may have to withstand scrutiny by a court and should be carefully phrased. We've had anything like that since I've been here where it's happened. Be sure everyone is clear on the motion. Reference relevant sections of the ordinance and staff reports. Whenever possible, make motions into positive. This helps eliminate confusion associated with negative motions when a motion to deny means that a yes is actually a no. The public and the applicant or the members may not be sure of the result of the vote. You know, that's happened before.
Is there an example of that?
I can, I can think of that in the ZVA recently, that we had one of those that I think maybe one of the members was a little unclear just because their vote was the opposite when I think that that person was on the same, in agreement with the rest of the ZVA, where it was, and maybe Mike remembers exactly the wording. Do you remember what I'm talking about, where it was a yes to deny? I mean, so it was, it was kind of a little confusing, just the, but, "Conditions may be imposed on any zoning decision except rezonings." I didn't know that. You can't do that with rezonings.
Well, you could have a contractual zoning, which does have conditions, right, Joe? I mean, when you have a contractual zoning agreement, we just did one with 156 East Gates. We gave a conditional, or not, it was a contractual zoning agreement. In fact, that's going to go to the board this month.
If I understand that correctly, that is a mutual agreement between petitioner and planning commission.
No.
And therefore the board.
No, it's a mutual agreement between the township, developer, and the board is the one that has to approve it. Yeah, we made a recommendation the board read subsequent to that. I was working with the attorney and with the developer's attorney to put an agreement in place. That agreement has been finalized and will go to the board this month.
That agreement was discussed at the planning commission?
Correct.
So that's why I said through the planning commission, all parties.
Correct.
Well, and as I understand from the planning training that I went through, that cannot be, that has to be offered up by the applicant. It cannot be mandated by the township.
That is correct. It has, all the conditions have to be offered by the applicant. Now, the planning commission can suggest that perhaps if you change some of those conditions, that it might be more...
Agreeable.
Yeah, more agreeable to the planning, which we did in this case, actually, over several months.
Movements in the chair. The chairperson should restate the motion clearly after it has been made and seconded. For example, it is moved and seconded that, when a motion requires a second, the chairperson should be sure that it is seconded. A motion with no second should be rejected. The chairperson should entertain only one motion at a time. Whenever possible, the chairperson should have the member state the motion before the member discusses it. The chairperson should give the maker of the motion the first chance to discuss it. The chairperson should not let anyone speak twice on a motion until all have had a chance to speak once. And by directing all comments through the chair, it's often possible to avoid debates between the audience, the presenter, and the audience, and the commission, and the audience, or presenter. If a motion includes conditions, they must be reasonable and intended to protect natural resources, the health, safety, and welfare, and the social and economic well-being of people. Also, necessary to meet the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance related to the standards established in the ordinance for the land use or activity under consideration, and necessary to ensure compliance with those standards.[1158.75][1158.75](Laughter).
Applause track?
That must have been it. Well, if they'd have waited one more minute, because this is my last slide, and I, you know, I was telling Joe that after looking at, you know, the different reference materials, it's, you know, the making of a motion is pretty cut and dry. I mean, there's helpful hints, but I really didn't find anywhere where, you know, kind of the psychology of, which I'm a psychology major, so it's kind of interesting to me that, that there was nothing, you know, the confidence that I think that you just, you just need to power through, especially making your first motion. And I know firsthand as a former planning commissioner myself, that making a motion requires a certain amount of confidence and nerve. The more controversial the issue, the more difficult it is to speak up and make a motion. The more people that are in the audience, the harder it is. If you're newer to the planning commission, there are others with more seniority and experience. It's really hard, but it's only your first motion once, and like everything else, you do it, you get through it, and it gets easier with each motion that you make. It's just one of those things, you get the confidence and do it. And I remember my, I remember my first motion, and it wasn't, it wasn't pretty, but, but yeah, I felt strongly and finally, you know, felt like I, I got my voice just because I felt really strongly about something, and, and yeah, that was a good feeling. But yeah, I think our commission does a good job. I think we're a really, really good group, and it's, you know, it wasn't the most, making motions is, there's not a whole lot of different ways to slice it, but, but yeah, it's just these thorough, all the different components of it, and, you know, we should, we should be making an awesome motion from time to time. Any questions?
I'd just like to share some thoughts.
Please.
I'm the senior member here as far as experience. And I remember distinctly when I first joined the planning commission, the chairman at the time would have motions prepared, there was also an attorney on the planning commission, and he would draft it, it was very, you know, be resolved, I mean, it was very formal. But they were prepared before the meeting and handed to us. And when I became chairman, I stopped doing it. Because I believe that it creates a prejudicial view before you, the planning commission, part of it is public comment.
Right, I agree.
And there were, there have been instances where I would come in with a view, and after public comment, my view would change because new information that I wasn't aware of was brought forward. So for myself personally, what I do is, especially if it's a complicated matter, is I take notes, diligent notes, what are the pros, what are the cons, what should it go? And then when I make a motion, I summarize those thoughts, or try to summarize those thoughts. But I never come in with a prepared, I shouldn't say never. I have come in with a prepared motion. It was one very complicated issue, and I prepared motions for and against, and with different arguments, and it was going to depend on how the, the meeting went, and the conversation, and what was presented, to sway either way. And the one I'm talking about is 156 East Gates. And that was the one where I pushed someone to try to make a motion, because no one was making a motion. So for new people, what I would say is, don't be afraid to make a motion. And the reason is, is you have people here who have made motions, and if yours is a little lacking, it'll be a learning experience. No one's going to hear and chew you up and say, oh, that was a bad motion, because that's not how we work here. But I would suggest that if there's a motion and you feel like you can do it, make a motion. And if something's lacking, we also have a professional planner who has suggested changes to some of our motions because something is missing. The second thing I'd like to say is that the minutes is the official record of the township. So when I come in here or someone comes in here and say, we'd like to adjust the minutes, not just the verbatim discussion so that it's documented, so that if you had to go back to it and justify what we did, if someone challenged it, or if someone came in with something that they thought was similar, we could defend the position without creating a precedent, so to speak, for something that may be different from what we did. And then, I've been retired almost five years now, but I remember back in the day, we always had a saying is, "Don't rely on heroes." In other words, don't rely on someone that knows a lot and experience to rely on, because they might not be there forever. So what you want to do is develop through education, through confidence building, through homework, I mean, especially if you're new, when, if you've got something here, Joe's comments are usually really, really good. But you also want to look at, what does the ordinance say, or what is the process? Like, what we, what we do is, we can approve site plans. That's an important responsibility of the township. So when we approve a site plan, we have to make sure that, did it meet all of our standards? And if it didn't meet the standards, make sure we intentionally state that we either waived or deferred something, and then the justification for what we did. Then we have special land uses that we have to make recommendations to the board. And when you have special land uses, you have to be very careful to make sure that there's, it meets the criteria, how, why do you approve special land uses? Does it fit the criteria? Is there enough uniqueness to make it different from what's the permitted use to the special use? And then the other thing we do is, big thing is, site condominium plans, which are a little more complicated typically, but those are also things. So I would say, do your homework, be prepared, don't be afraid, try it. I mean, Dana, you weren't even on the commission for a year, and you had made a couple of motions on some things that were too simple.
But you get that, you know, that nervous stomach.
But once you do it once, I mean, the best way to address your fear is just to attack it. The first time I ever taught as a professor, when I first walked in that room, I wanted to walk out. I said, I don't want to do this. But once you do it, then you've got it. I really liked it. So it's kind of like, if you fear something, do it anyway. So, but nice presentation, by the way, very well done. You addressed a lot of the key points. And really, the thing about making motions is, you have to do your homework, you have to be prepared, understand the issue.
I like the note, the note taking, though, and I agree with that, that, and I...
Yeah, people see me writing, I'm writing because I'm putting my thoughts on paper, because my memory's not what it used to be.
Well, at any point, I mean, you go to then make your motion, and that's when you're under pressure and all, so the notes, you know, are great.
I know, Ed and I have talked about this subject, too. And Ed talked at Sterling Heights, and they actually had motions detailed.
Yeah, if I can expand on that. I got on the planning commission.
Sterling Heights.
In Sterling Heights. And eventually became vice chairman and had the opportunity to do some meetings. Yet, on the very first meeting that I get here, I didn't have any of that support, I felt, in what I had there. Why? Because I knew how to run the meeting, but that was the piece of cake. But I also had ample notes from the professional planner, who was an employee of the township. And they had, at the meeting, a lawyer, that same person, a professional hired, gun-shelled land attorney, Norm Burr was his name, for anybody that knew him doing, I don't know. And, of course, they're all open now, you know, I was younger than them. Anyway, it was much easier because we were given, here's, if you want to approve it, here it is. Because I, the professional planner, have looked at all that. However, if you agree with this part of it, you can say this, you get denied, this is your motion, word for word. And one hour before the meeting, we all arrived, and the professional planner gave some insight into what we were going to be hearing. And so you're not supposed to do that, I don't think, but that's the way it was done. It's still that way, I don't know, because people are all gone. And how I got to be a planning commissioner was, there was an issue involving a subdivision that I had bought into, and nearby developer was creating something that was going to be bad. And so I won't bore you with all the details, but I made the mistake of taking the lead for the subdivision. And the next day, I got a call from the mayor and said, hey, this is, my name is Jerry Mann. I said, Jerry Mann, hi Jerry, didn't recognize his name. And at that point, I was just a twenty-some-year-old... recognize his name. And at that point, I was just a twenty-some-year-old person, single guy, bought a house. And anyway, shortened that up. He said, well, we really liked the way you handled yourself last night, and you had all the details that you needed to cause us to, to vote against what the person was asking for. We want you to be on the planning commission. And that was my start. But every meeting, an hour ahead, professional planner, Joe, doesn't just give you what he thinks you want to consider. He said, this is a motion to approve. If you feel this way, that's a motion, a motion to deny. There wasn't much thought, wasn't much work, but it worked. Also, some of those things that were done, as I went through my training, are not supposed to happen. One was a big city, and one was Bruce Township. So it wasn't very difficult to make a motion. Because if I wanted to do one, the reason why I don't want to do this is because, you know. And we get different things from Joe. We get, consider this, you know, you, you give us the, I'll call it the highlights of what is important, and we have to do the rest of the work. So it is more difficult, especially if you're in Sterling Heights. My last mention of them, every meeting, this, this is not enough chairs. And so they did it that way, and it works, worked. I don't know what they're doing there. So what do we do? There is some information that I sent in an email that I got from Mike. And I'd like to suggest, if you haven't read it, to go back and read it. I think you all got a copy of it that I have here. And there's a very simple chart, not a chart, three paragraphs. If you want, if you listen to what is being said, and you want to approve, uh, there's, there's words here that say, based upon the information in the staff report, based on the information we got from Dana, information we got from the commission, the commissioner, and the input that we received from Joe and Gary, I move the planning commission to approve such and such and such and such. Very simple. You have to come to the decision, why do I make approval versus deny. And in the document that I sent out, there's a second one, motion to approve with conditional, with conditions modified by the planning commission. That's what pops out during the meeting. Well, we don't like that. Okay, well, if you do this, that might work. That becomes the condition. And, um, the last one is motion to deny. And that's where you got to pick up, why this should not be done. Again, we get tips from Joe where there's some, some concerns, and you get a lot of questions out of people. And those people aren't necessarily sitting up here. And I got a letter that I pulled out of my old file. A key factor in selecting the location, the building of the rural country setting, while we realize that development will inevitably happen over time, we would expect that our government officials would use, and it goes on. This is a letter from, um, someone on Elkhorn Drive, July fifth, 2023. So we do get some input from others as well, that we've got to consider, discuss. And they put some pretty good things in here. Once, it certainly makes, again, highlight my comment. It would give you the actual words, which you could modify. But I lost the train of thought on that for a second. Oh, the, the reference to the master plan in here. So looking at the master plan should be something that Joe does, that each of us do. There's other things like that. And I'm not going to go through all of them, but you can read what's here. Where the start of a motion can come from one of those three. You just have to supply the detail about what you heard, what Joe said, what other commissioners have said, as being a reason to deny. You don't have to have a planning commission, or every commissioner votes the same way. In fact, it's better if you don't, in my opinion. And I, I saved the, the one for the first discussion on Gates. I saved it to the very end, and I voted against. Vote as, was approved. I thought about it long and hard. Well, that's the way that I feel. And I wouldn't be honest with you, but approved things that we're going to deny the request, recommending them. Everyone has, when I'm now looking at, my suggestion, read it, reread it, and take a chance. And you got, and I used to hit my trombone, and do it again. It was the trombone Okanowski show. And what I would like to see it as a planning commissioner, and I won't go through every single name, I'd like to have everybody part of the show, so I can't pick on Mike anymore. And I think it takes, um, the willingness, the guts, to just do it. And how did I become a planning commissioner? Explained how did I get to be the chair, because someone else who probably was at that time, who definitely at that time was not qualified, refused it. And I know there was a conversation.
Nope.
And the first meeting that I had, I actually apologized to the whole planning commission afterwards, because I didn't do a good job at all. And over time, did a little bit. On the first, first motion that somebody's going to make that hasn't made, a difficult one, I know Mike will help, and anyone else on this planning commission will help. You just got to jump right out. And I intend, and I made a very clear decision when I took the chairmanship initially, and thought, told Mike, I'm not going to make any motions, because I felt like I needed to focus on leading, controlling the crowd, et cetera. But now, either I, I do make motions, or I'm going to quit. Very simple.
Actually, actually, it's recommended that the chairman not make motions.
Yes.
I mean, that's a recommendation. It's not an absolute.
Some planning commissions have bylaws that prohibit the chair from making a motion.
I got a few comments. Going back to the citizen planner trading, I remember one instructor shared that you need to keep, um, our motions factual, and ideally within specific guidelines. Because if further we deviate from those guidelines, it opens up a challenge in circuit court. Or, you know, if, if challenged, it opens up. Exposure's not the word, but I mean, it's just like, it, it reduces our, our, uh, position of strength. So there's a, um, within our zoning ordinance, under 161-6 dot 2 special land use, there's review standards in there. And it's some excellent information that can be woven into, um, creating motions. Again, it's 161-6 dot 2. So, and beyond that, I think everybody is aware of Macomb County GIS, correct? We're all aware of that website? Are you, Mandy? You're not?
Wait, what was I saying?
It's Macomb County GIS. And it's very simple to use. And you scroll down, and there's a, a panel. It's just parcel explorer. Just poke around. If you got any questions, call me for the sake of time, and I can give you a few tips for how to navigate it. But it's very simple. And basically, what you can do is you expand the map, and you can look at overhead view, you can turn on street names. And so it saves you a potential trip out to the site. And it's, at least you got an overhead view. So that's, the first thing I do is I'll look at, um, the application, then I'll look at Joe's memo, and then I'll look at parcel explorer within Macomb GIS. If I'm not satisfied, likely I'll do a drive-by. And then if I'm still not satisfied, if I got questions, I will, um, call the applicant. Their phone number's on the application. Last time I did was Dan Schick for his accessory building. And so that's, by the time you go through all that stuff, and then also for what Ed just said, we're here to help with motions. I mean, nobody's judging anybody. You'll hear every time I make a motion, Mike's always taking it, and providing some, some valuable input. So, you know, it's an iterative process. We work together as a team. So, um, that, and it seemed like something else just slipped my mind. But, you know, for the sake of time, I think that's it. I think of it all.
Yeah, I would just add a suggestion that if you're going to call an applicant, go visit the property, just observe. Don't make comments whether you think it's good or bad. Leave that to yourself. And just observe what you, what you want to look at and thinking. That's all. It's best not to make any opinions to the applicant at that particular time.
I, I know what I want to add regarding Dan Schick. And I talked to Dan, um, talked with Dan prior to the, um, him coming into the planning commission briefly. And, you know, and I made comments during the, um, during his, um, presentation. And, you know, I really didn't believe it was a, I voted for it, but I had apprehensions. But I got to admit, I was wrong. You drive, you know, Dan lives across from Big Red. And if you haven't driven by, I mean, I've never seen a pole building nicer than Dan's. And he's really already got it shielded well with the pines. I was wrong. I mean, he really has, has done something that's an asset to the community. So, you know, when we do those things, we confront, you know, more pole buildings. And that's the standard that I like to see, Matt, versus just, you know, something that looks like a nineteen fifties or sixties beige box. So, anyway.
I wanted to add with, with the Macomb County GIS, it's got a few neat features. I use it for, for the, for the notices, the mail-out notices, which you wouldn't need to. But it's also got a, um, an aerial. You can flip back and forth between the actual aerial and just the property lines in like a 2D kind of rendering.
Topography layer to.
You know what, why don't we take and, you, you got the connectivity down. Why don't you give a brief demo, GIS demo during the next meeting? If, and you've got my numbers. If you've got any questions for how to navigate it in the meantime, feel free to call me.
And I'm happy to do that. But, but I think what you said would, would help, just go on there and poke around. There's also a measuring, so that, you know, you can double-check the, the dimensions, just by dragging the line. You can, you know, use it for measuring. It's relatively accurate, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty good. It's, at least as accurate as the Google Maps.
Is it different than the Google Maps?
It is, yeah. It's a different platform. For one thing, Google Maps doesn't generally have property lines. If you're trying to measure from a property line, you're sort of seeing like, ah, it looks like it's kind of where that row of trees is. Whereas on here, the property lines, they'll usually be shifted a little bit, just because the earth is round and we're looking at it on a flat screen. But, um, yeah, you can kind of check, okay? They said it was 20 feet on this plan, and it looks like, yes, it's 20 feet on the aerial as well. We're close, so it's probably right.
I use it daily, too.
Yeah, I use it all the time. Ed and the Oakland one, they're like probably the two most visited sites on my work computer.
Okay, so I just have a couple more. As a guy running the meeting, I was not able to make notes during the meeting because so much was happening. And I would encourage everybody to make their minutes and their notes. I'm going to. And what I have noticed is if you leave something out, somebody has it. If you put too much in, somebody will suggest after the meeting, you got too much in there, or even during the, but no one ever will say, why did you start motion and not finish? Mike has done a good job with me along the way. As, as the chairman, in guiding Ed, not so much in the meeting, but outside the meeting. And I'm sure it would help if you have questions. Or I think Rick does a good job sometimes, too much detail. But does a good job of researching and stuff, and making his points get across. Even presenting to a bunch of hostile people. And the one where you had an overhead screen. So it isn't, it isn't easy, but it, getting on the planning commission is an honor, because somebody else wanted it, and you got it. So, and when I say you, I mean, so, any thoughts, questions? Anything you want to add, anything you need in a way of helping get ready for a meeting? I mean, we have the, the laws that control how many people can talk, and emails and all that, so we don't do that. But I think, Mike, you'll correct me if I'm wrong. One-on-one discussions are okay.
As long as you don't have one-on-one with everybody.
Yes.
Yeah. Because then you're, you're circumventing the, the rule.
So, any thoughts, questions? Karen, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Ed. Appreciate all the insight and sharing of your experiences. And I think we'll all benefit from that as we go forward. All right. Wrapping up the agenda here, item 12, comments in committees. We don't have any committees. Joe is our consultant. Nothing. Comments from commissioners, 13?
Yeah, just give a brief. The Kate's accessory building, SLU, which was on size, was approved by the board. The tobacconists and site condominium timeframes, ordinance change, both of those items were approved by the board. Just for information, um, there is going to be, I mean, this, this is complimentary to what we discussed regarding our industrial.
Yep.
Commercial district. There is an industrial, meeting for our industrial people in the township on September 12th at 6 o'clock at the township. Everybody's invited to come if they'd like. But it's, it should result in some good conversation. And then at the last meeting, we asked for, was the site condominium type frames retroactive? And it's not. So I, I went back and I looked at the, and the gentleman from Lombardo who asked the question, actually has two developments, Edgemont and Sinyou Point, which were both approved. Preliminary site print, plan was approved in October of 21. And we're still waiting on them to come back for secondary approval after, after they go through engineering. That hasn't happened. But the reason that prompted the timeframes, from my perspective, was to avoid those in the future. Because those are just, they're lingering on, they're almost two years old now. Engineering hasn't even started. So we don't want that type of activity in our township. So if you're, if you're serious about developing here, then, then get a timeline and stick to it.
Do it.
And just, just keep, Johnny, your prayers.
So Edgemont will have to adhere to the new requirements or no?
No. Therefore, anything due, if you, if you've already received preliminary approval, you are exempt from, from the ordinance, or the changes to the ordinance.
And it got changed longer, once it went to the board. And it got changed longer, once it went to the board?
Yes, oh, yeah. I wanted to let you guys know that when it got approved, one year was changed to two years, and it was a practical change, because the experience with our planning department is that engineering has been taking longer, and it's not just us, it's other municipalities are experiencing the same thing. So the, Mike Philbrook has suggested two years, I was okay with two years, given the practical reasoning, so. It was approved with a two-year for the engineering review. Thank you, Dana.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I wanted to unpaste four comments.
Okay.
Wrote them on the very first page, which was Dana's presentation, but I never went through them. Learning from prior meetings and motions, and you can look them up on YouTube. And what I started doing is just that at one point, and I got to where I was looking at the YouTube video, looking to, or listening how it was handled, Connie's show made, Mike made, everyone made, I just send them, you know. So YouTube, you can get any meeting. And the meeting minutes that we do now are, to me, the other ones were better, because they were more detailed, where these are more of a summary. But if you can look for similar issues in minutes, then you can go back to the YouTube and watch it, and hear what was said, and say, does it apply here? That's what I intend to do. In the meeting I did not attend, I went and looked at the YouTube, and the recording was horrible. I ended up just giving up. It's been a lot.
Anybody know how this one went?
Anybody know how this one went?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't listen. How's it going, Eli?
It sounds good.
Okay. Yeah, we did have WBRW came out and made it. Spent a lot of time here, and Eli was here, too, and I think since then, we're good.
All set?
All set.
You sure this time?
Positive. I'll call you on the phone.
Yeah. Only other thing I have is, we did touch on it just at the beginning, we did have resignation from Connie, and so with that vacancy, had some conversation with potential interested applicants for the planning commission, so we have made a recommendation to our supervisor, like Philbrook, to add Anne Marie Boyce to the planning commission. She's a familiar face, she's been in front of us quite a few times. And so she, quite a bit of experience, longtime resident in the township, and I think she'll be a great addition. That will go before the September board meeting. And with that, 13 is done. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting concludes, 9:29.